Okay, I'm gonna start. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:46 that sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Nora, you wanna call the roll?
Berkowitz. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Berkowitz. Kaplan.
Here.
Tariq.
Here.
Persad.
Here.
Ready. Snyder.
Then.
Here. Willens.
Here.
Hurricane. Hurricane. We know he's here. Okay. Yes, now we can. We also have the Board Attorney, Mr. King, the Board Planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our Board Engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Present, present, present.
Great.
Present.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public, there's any business to be brought on this board that's not on this evening's agenda? There already is standing hands raised.
No hand raised.
Okay, I guess we can do the resolutions next.
Can we do a batch lot on these resolutions?
Uh, I think we can move all the Cs at once.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Um, the first seven is one group, the last two is another.
Yeah, okay, good.
Berkowitz, I move applications number twenty, twenty colon forty-two, twenty colon thirty-eight, twenty colon forty, and twenty colon forty-three to be approved.
Second, Willens.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Tariq.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
I'm abstaining because I didn't see it in my email box. I searched high and low.
Hurricane.
And Willens was the last two.
Yes, I apologize. Yes, you are.
Okay, so which other ones do we have to, uh?
Well, that leads to two Ds that you probably should do separately.
Did we do thirty-seven? Because I didn't hear that one.
Well, no, I, I'm sorry, I missed that one. So I, I'm, application twenty colon thirty-seven.
Your second.
Second, ID.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Ber- Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Tariq.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
I'm abstaining. I didn't, I didn't.
Yes.
Hurricane. Hurricane.
He's, he's unmuted.
Yes.
Okay, and then the last two, twenty forty-three and twenty thirty-nine can be done together.
Well, we got, I thought we did.
Seven, isn't it?
We did all the Cs. We just need to do all five and eleven, right?
There are nine resolutions.
I had nineteen. In nineteen oh seven and twenty-eleven.
Are you moving those, ready?
I'm, I, should we move the Ds separate, or does it matter?
You know, I have them listed in a way where, you know, the group of you can do it. The first seven resolutions, all the same people approved it. The last two resolutions, all the same people approved them.
All right, well, I'll, I'll move them separately because like, application nineteen oh seven, I move we approve the resolution submitted.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Tariq.
Yes.
Ready. Ready.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes.
Yes.
Application twenty-eleven, I move that we approve the resolution as submitted.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yep.
Tariq.
Yes.
Ready. Ready.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
No other business besides the applications that are on the agenda?
Only the applications.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, application nineteen sixty-seven, Francisco Mateo, twenty-one Farron Drive, C variance to legalize the existing pool, pool equipment and patio.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Mateo, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah.
Could you, uh, enable your video?
Okay, one sec.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or firm testimony you're about to give before the Board of the Troops to help you God?
Yes.
And for the record, you're the owner of the subject property?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is sworn.
Mateo, can you tell us a little bit about the in-ground pool? It doesn't seem to be built from this.
Uh, well, we, when we bought the house, the, the in-ground pool was already here. But when I went to remove the concrete and replace it with pavers, Mike, the, the town inspector passed by and, you know, I let him in, and he took pictures and then he said that it, the pool was not in any of the surveys that they had in the town. So I had to re, you know, go through all the process in order to get a new survey and then have it approved.
When, when did you buy the house?
Uh, twenty fifteen, June twenty fifteen.
And, and you're saying that the pool was put in by a prior owner?
Yes, uh, it's, uh, I, according to my neighbors, it's been here since like the eighties.
And, um, there's no record of a, of a, um, any municipal building permits or anything that was, you never checked when you bought the house, you just assumed everything was done.
Yeah, no, it was, they never checked for any, any, um, permits or anything like that, no.
So your, um, rear yard pool equipment is, I guess, on the property line, and I guess there's no way you can move that officially?
Uh, no, I can't move it, no.
And, uh, the other variance is impervious coverage, you're only a couple percent over, and as we have mentioned many, many times in these meetings, a pool is not a, it's a collector of water, so it's kind of not, and it, it's not an impervious cut, so it is and it isn't, and you should at least take that into consideration. Now, Mr. Lizza, our town attor- uh, town, uh, town engineer, says a rating plan has not been submitted. The rear yard is relatively flat and seems that there'd be normal changes to the grade of the land, however, a minus twelve movement permit is required. Do you understand that?
Hmm, no, I don't, I don't understand. I need to move, what, why do I need to move? I'm sorry.
Did you get a, did you get a copy of this, um, memo from just Justin Lizard, the municipal engineer, dated August thirteenth, twenty twenty?
Uh, yeah, yeah, but that was, that was for my old permit. I was trying to put it, um, I was trying to extend, uh, the, the yard and, but I canceled that. This is just for the pool.
Nora, you know anything about this? Nora, do you hear me?
Hold on, I can hear you. Um, I don't think that this is just about the pool alone. Um, it's been a while since that, uh, memo came from the township engineer. Um, he's also, uh, Mr. Mateo changed his application a couple of times. So there may have been other, I don't know that there's been any other memos, uh, since. There has not been any other memos since. So I don't know how much of this applies. He originally submitted, did two more revisions, so some of this may not apply.
Well, Mr. Mateo, if we grant you an approval tonight, what's happened, would you be willing to contact Mr. Lizard and get this memo straightened out and, and make sure that Nora is aware of what, what has to be done, and we'll make, we'll make it an approval subject to, uh, this memo being, being, uh, resolved? Is that acceptable to you?
Yes, I'll, yes, I definitely, I'll contact Mr. Russo and explain to him that my application was changed.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might, if, if the engineer has any other concerns or requirements, that would also be subject to the, uh, approval.
That, that, yeah, it would have to be a hundred percent of what he wants done has to be, uh, agreed to. Uh, it's, you know, we're kind of in a, uh, I, I don't want to put you in a holding pattern at this point, because we, we may not have the correct information, but if you're willing to, to, uh, I'm assuming the board is in agreement with me, if you're willing to, uh, review this with Mr. Lizard and get it straightened out. You're replacing an existing concrete patio with pavement, with paver stone?
No, no, that was the old application. I was, I'm just validating the pool that's the pre-existing, the pre-existing pool that's in place.
Oh, so you're not gonna do any, 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 uh, uh, nothing?
No, no.
This memo doesn't even contain it?
Yeah, no.
Uh, I have a question to that.
Holloway, does that make sense?
Yeah, I could believe that's, that's an old memo that, uh, if there was originally some soil movement to be proposed, but it seems like now there's nothing to be proposed.
Okay.
The only question I have, Mr. Chairman, is number three, where he talks about, uh, str- no structure fifty feet within fifty feet of, uh, of the streamer, of the stream easement? I, I can't tell from the survey if the pool is within fifty feet, so should we grant the waiver if needed?
Mr. Holloway?
No, I would, uh, I would suggest that there be some confirmation that it's not impacting, uh, wetland buffer or something of that nature. Because fifty feet is a typical buffer area for a, uh, for a stream.
Well, the survey shows a ten-foot sewer easement. Is that, is that what he's talking about?
I would have to pull up the flood net information map on this property. Um, they just, um, can't confirm from if there's a stream, but, uh, no, there's nothing, if there's an easement, just, that's not a problem at all, as long as you're not building over the easement.
Okay, just so he doesn't get stuck later, that's the ways.
Well, back, go back to Mr. Lizza's memo, then he's gonna have to resolve from the French. Well, we have to resolve numbers.
Is there a stream on this property?
I think it backs up to an easement.
Well, that'd be a different, a difference between a stream and an easement, right?
Is there a stream approaching in the area somewhere?
There, there's not a stream, that's a storm drain, and it's way, it's, it's off. It's not directly in line with the pool.
Yeah, if it's, if it's the easement, I wouldn't have a particular concern if there's a buried pipe or something there. I don't know what the easement is re, is for. Do you happen to know what it's for?
That, that was for the old, um, application with, where I was gonna put pavers on the other side, where, uh, right across from the stream, on the other side of the, my yard, but I would, I'm not doing that anymore. That's why I changed my application.
Okay.
Can I ask why you changed your applica- what, what's the justice, does it change a heart?
Be- because it was, it, I got that memo about the fifty feet, and, and it was gonna cost more for me to actually meet that, those requirements, so I just, um, canceled that, that haul.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is it a pool, is it a pool within fifty feet of the, uh, stream?
It's, it's not, it's not even close to the stream. It's like, it's on the other side. The stream is, the pool's on this side, the stream must on this side of the yard.
No, I understand. So, uh, based on the mentions on the plan, I'm not quite sure what the, is the, the dimension to the stream from the pool.
I'm not sure, but I know my original application never got any memos. Once I added, uh, the pavers on the other side of the yard, that's when I got the memo.
No, I understand, but, uh, you may still have to, um, do some more information on when the pool was built and whether it's affected by, uh, the stream buffers these days.
Uh, well, like I said, the pool came with the house. I, I have, unfortunately, my, my lawyer that I hired, he didn't check any permits, so I can't really tell you, like, nobody has any information about it.
Did you hire a surveyor when you bought your house?
Uh, no, I did not. Uh, like, that was, this is my first home, so now I know everything to check, so.
Could I summarize it here? So initially, you wanted to put, uh, more pavers around the pool, take out the old concrete that was there. You're not putting in a new pool, is, or what's going on?
No, no, no. I wanted to put pavers on the other side.
I, I understand, okay. So now, after finding out that that would encroach on things and you had to make some changes, you decided not to do that?
Not to do that.
What are you changing, if anything, in the property right now?
Nothing right now. I'm not changing anything.
That's why I wanted to clarify. So what, what, what does he need, uh, you just need to have the pool legalized from the standpoint of this hearing right now, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pool's been there for thirty-two years.
That's what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman.
Right, and do you, do you have, uh, have you had any circumstances where your neighbor's properties have been flooded, is, or an excessive amount of, your, your, uh, especially an excessive amount of rainwater from your property, or is there ever been a problem?
No, the only problem we had was the, the storm drain used to get clogged, but the town's been taking care of that by cleaning it.
Holloway, is that okay?
That's, that's, that's acceptable.
Any other questions by the board?
Yeah, you're, so for the applicant, you're, you're telling us that that pool has been there for thirty years?
From what I am aware, my, my neighbors have said. As, he, he said that he's, when they put it, it was like in the eighties. And he doesn't, he doesn't know, he doesn't have any records or anything, so.
That, you have a patio right off your back deck, or right off the back of the house?
Uh, yes, but it's a small concrete slab.
Yep, and the pool is to the left of that?
Yes, it's to the left of that, that's correct.
A- and we would see that on a recent satellite image?
Uh, yes, I believe, I believe it has updated, if you look at it. If you search Google Maps, you should see it.
Cause I, I see a lot of pools around you.
We can't do that, Dave.
All right.
Can't do that, sorry.
I retract that question, then.
That, so, I, I, you know, if the, if the applicant brought it as an exhibit, we can do it, or if it was an object, we brought it as an exhibit.
I, I just find.
You don't have to take my computer now, do you?
I, I, I just, if that pool's been out there since the eighties, I mean, this house hasn't changed ownership until Mr. Mateo got it, and I'm just, you know, kinda.
You don't necessarily have to change ownership. You just find out these things when they come for a permit. Like, he comes for a permit to do stuff, they can check the property.
But when somebody purchases the property, when somebody purchases property.
In this time of stuff like this?
Okay, I, I got it, okay, but normally when people purchase a property, they hire a surveyor, and I'm just, I'm baffled that we're just, uh, you know, hearing about it now.
Yeah, but the surveyor's gonna tell you there's a pool there, but the surveyor's not gonna tell you whether there was ever any permits issued. Isn't that correct, Mr. Holloway, Mr. Chadwick?
Please repeat that.
If I bought a house today, and I got a survey done in the property, and I have a pool in the backyard, okay, and I have a nice beautiful survey, you know, eight, nine by eleven, everything's pretty. The, the pool could still be, uh, been put in without a permit, and nobody's gonna know it unless you check with the town, correct? The surveyor doesn't check for permits, does he, or doesn't?
You compare it to the last survey, don't you?
This, uh, this survey, um, that, uh, we have with the package is dated two thousand and nineteen, June of eighteenth, so, uh, normally with a survey, they have to show all proposed improvements that are on the property, and that's what meets the bounds for the property line.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, when, when.
Can I go to the town and get copies of the permits?
Mr. Chairman, when you go, when you purchase a house, one of, one of the things that the attorney should do is get a survey. Many times, the, um, title insurance company, if it's an old survey, they want you to go out and get a, um, new survey. Uh, so that survey's produced during the closing, and, and you, you're, you get that so you can see if there's any changes, and there's an affidavit of, um, no change usually to the survey, so if you have a survey that shows no pool, um, y- you, you would have that, so.
And that's how you could catch it.
But I don't think the issue is the survey.
The only way you're gonna get a second is to go to the tax assessor and see all the permits that were issued. When I bought my property in nine, seven, eight, I bought it with my brother-in-law, who was an engineer, and he said, go to the town and get a copy of the, of the, everything from the tax assessor. The tax assessor had every line item converted from residence to office, nineteen seventy-eight, done this, done that, everything that was done to the building was, was in that report. In the, in nineteen, in two, nineteen ninety-seven, I, when I was running for council, I was challenged that I, I, by the then-building inspector, that I had converted this from the business to a residence because somebody reported, okay? It's the only way to break down that, that counter. I went there with all my paperwork and said, look here, to the building, all buildings, I said, I've got paperwork right here, your paperwork. That was the end of the story, so. Uh, unless you check with the town when you buy the house as to what is there, the survey tells you what, survey says very nice, but it doesn't tell you whether it was ever permitted. And we, and we've gone through, how many of these cases were people who bought houses and subsequently, uh, so?
You're right, it doesn't, you know, yeah, I think this is going on way too long, but hold on for a second. You're right, it doesn't tell you what is permitted or not, but when you purchase a property, much to Mr. King's point, you take the last survey that was conducted, and you compare it with the survey that your lawyer is doing, and if you see anything unusual and different between the two surveys, then you start asking questions of the potential buy, uh, seller, that is, and just basically say, is this permitted? Is this permitted? Is this permitted?
What if three hundred ago was the property you got permitted? Current owners, you bought it, bought the house, you gotta go to the town, you gotta check the town records, and, and the Kings, the Chadwick, Mr. Holloway, am I wrong? Isn't that the way you're gonna find out if you got, if you ultimately someone to permit?
See, uh, there's no reason why if you just prepared a new survey that you would have as a property owner, you wouldn't have the, uh, original survey unless the owners had that to give you for a reference, or the best scenario is to go to the town and see what records they have for the property.
But it's filed with the county clerk's office. You could easily get it through the county clerk's office.
You, and also Title usually would, um, pick that up, like a title insurance policy, they would pick up any, um.
Survey, surveys are filed.
I think, let's get back to Mr. Mateo's issue here. Does anybody else have any questions of Mr. Mateo on his pool? As that's all he wants, is to legalize his pool. He's been there first in excess of thirty years. Any questions by the board?
Yeah, my, my question is, can that pool be legalized with it, if it's within fifty feet of the stream?
We had that once before, and we said we couldn't approve it unless the DEP or someone approved something, like a statue or.
Memo with, with regard to the, to the work that you wanted to do, and you stopped doing.
And Dave, I think also, it's, it's not, it's not a stream out there, it, it's, it's a, it's a right-of-way, it's a storm drain of some kind.
A storm drain.
Yeah. It's not a stream.
So that number three there really is irrelevant, one way or the other.
Yes, I, I believe it's irrelevant.
The whole memo is irrelevant.
The whole memo is irrelevant.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions?
No hand raised? No. Yes.
I would just interject that, uh, uh, the approval be, uh, subject to, um, any available, any require, primary requirements, uh, they don't have to actually go to DEP, but, uh, they would be responsible for acknowledgement that the, uh, pool is, um, concurrent with the, uh, regulations required.
Does he have to get building permits for this pool now that we're legalizing it? Anybody know? Mr. Holloway, Mr. King, Mr. Chadwick, anybody know?
That's, that's my understanding, uh, when they originally did it, you would think so, they would have to get a permit.
You think he now has to get building permit? Yes, I get inspection.
But it would be up to the building department whether or not that's required.
I, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would think he would, and, and also possibly electric, because if there's an electric pump.
You have to get a plumbing permit to get a valve, put on your hose for, when you put a pool in. It's a little thing that's about two inches long, it goes on your, on your outside spigot, so the water doesn't suck back in on system. That's, that's a real winner. Okay, um, so, uh, Mr. Mateo, I, I assume you've given us everything you want to give us, and probably spent more time on this than you thought. Um, is there, uh, any member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? Nora, any hand?
No hands.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have one more question. I'm sorry, I'm just confused. The, the variances that we are approving, as written here, like the thirty-two percent existing, thirty-two percent proposed, that includes the current pool and pavers that are there?
Yes, it's current. Yes, it's in the two columns. It's in existing and proposed.
Right, I get that. What, what is he not doing then? What, what did he change his mind from doing?
Putting the pavers in, putting the pavers in. He's, he's, he's abandoned that effort. He's not doing the patio.
So what's around the pool right now, just?
Concrete.
Concrete slab.
Okay, thank you.
Concrete. Well, I, the recommendation that I would make on this application is that we, um, approve it with, um, requirement that, uh, Mr. Mateo gets a proper permits and inspections of the property, including Mr. Lizza, to, to assure that, that A, there's an electric permit, B, there's a plumbing permit, C, there's a building permit, and C, that Mr. Lizza approves any setbacks that are, that are required, and if he can't get those, those things done, then he's gotta come back to us. Mr. King, does that make sense?
Yes, he, he needs to comply with all the town, state, and county, um, uh, permit requirements, as well as contact the town engineer to make sure that there's no, um, requirements required under that old letter, as long as you can get, we, we think that that old letter that was, um, issued is not valid anymore, but we just want to make sure that that is the case.
Mr. Holloway, that's okay?
That's fine, that's.
Mr. Chadwick, is that okay?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Any other members, any other member of the board have any comments that they want to include in the resolution? Well, I have a motion to, uh, to, to, uh, a motion based on what I just said.
I'll make the motion. An application number nineteen colon sixty-seven, Francisco Mateo, twenty-one Farron Drive, block seven twelve, lot twenty-five, zone R three, that we grant a C variance to legalize existing pool, pool equipment and patio contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns nine and thirteen, subject to the. subject to the resolution of Mr. Liza's memo dated August thirteenth of two thousand and twenty, and, and other engineer requirements, uh, requested, and any other associated town, state, or county permitting requirements and inspections real, relative to all components of the pool structure.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora Calderwolfs.
Berkowitz.
Yes, yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Owee.
Yes.
Saad. Ready.
Yes.
Saad. Snyder.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Saad, take yourself off mute.
We don't need him, we got a call.
Ira King.
Yes. Result is a variance is granted, subject to the conditions that we have spelled out. Uh, Mr. Mateo, you will be memorialized in two weeks, and then you'll be free to pick up your papers at that point. Do you have any problems or questions after tonight's meeting? I suggest you contact Nora, and she can point you in the right direction, hopefully whoever's in the building department.
All right.
Mr. Mateo's still here, I don't see him anymore.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All right, have a nice evening, Mr. Mateo.
You too.
Let's call case, uh, twenty thirty-six. Van Polly, thirty-five Lake Drive, uh, C variance to legalize a shed on a concrete pad.
Um, Polly, I apologize, he, um, his application will not be heard tonight, there were noticing issues.
Okay, what are we gonna carry this case to? Oh, he's gonna notice, he has to notice?
He has to renotice, I'll give him a day.
So we're not carrying this case. Okay, uh, Di Giuseppe, Di Giuseppe. Nineteen Ogden Place, C variance to construct an irregular in-ground swimming pool and patio and six-foot-high fence. Michael McDiGiuseppe, are you here?
Yes, good evening, I'm here.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear from testimony about to give before the board's choose to help you God?
Yes.
And for the record, are you the subject, uh, owner of the, uh, subject property nineteen Ogden Place?
Yes.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, applicant has been sworn.
Okay, you're looking for a variance for fences and walls and impervious coverage.
That is correct.
You live in an R-three zone and you have a piece of property, it looks like it's pretty conforming, I don't trust the image dimension. Yes, you have a conforming lot, sixteen thousand square feet or fifteen thousand required. Um, looks like you got some pay, some driveway, a house, wood stack and steps, little pad there, you wanna put a pool and, um, and a patio, how's the patio gonna be done? Is it gonna be done in pavers or is it gonna be concrete?
Uh, it's gonna be done in pavers.
Okay, will there, will there be, um, some space between the pavers that will permit the water to penetrate the surface? Or is it going to be, I don't wanna use the word tongue and groove or anything like that, but, uh, is it just a normal, normal paving job will allow some of the water, okay? And the pool is a collector of water. So that, so where is, where is the six-foot-high fence that you need? Can you explain that to me, why you need a variance for a six-foot-high fence?
So, the very, the fence is just a permit for the fence. We're going in for the same time at doing the permit for the fence, the variance is more for the pool because of being over the impervious ground coverage. But as far as the fence is concerned, it's the right side of the yard, and then it's a gate on the left side of the property, and then a gate on the right side of the property. The other sides of our yard are already fenced in via our neighbors.
You're not on the corner, are you?
The, the, the reason the fence is listed, wants to put it right on the property line, it's supposed to be six inches off.
Ah.
That is correct, my apologies.
Do you have any problems being six inches off?
Uh, I do not have, uh, problems with that, we're, we're hooking into our neighbor's fences that are already standing.
Well, the, the fences that go, you, you're building a pool fence, actual. And there's a specific standard for a pool fence. So what I suggest is you ask this board uh, that you will have a conforming pool fence. I don't know what your neighbor's fence is, whether or not it can form. Go to the building department before you make that decision. There is a very specific standard for pool fence. They can't be climbable. And I don't know what they're, so ask the board, you put the fence in, you can be six foot high if you want, and you will be six inches off your property line. Is that agreeable?
So all of my, all of my neighbor's fences are six-foot-high fences?
That, that is not the issue, it's whether or not a kid.
Like vinyl or wood that's not climbable?
It, there are vinyl fences that are not climbable.
Well, you'll check, check with the building department.
Understood.
Whether they allow it, and check with your insurance carrier and see if they're happy with it.
Understood.
And I'm, I'm just gonna send comment we made with the last application, the pool, even though it's considered impervious coverage, does not, uh, disperse water like a, uh, like a house or a concrete patio or something like that. Uh, any other questions by the board?
Uh, just a point of clarification, maybe, but it seems to me that the problem is he's trying to hook into his neighbor's fences, his neighbor's fences may already be on the property line or six inches within their property. So if he's gonna try and have a straight fence with his fence, he's gonna have to take a little jog or jag that, that's gonna be there, that could be a structural problem. Yeah, the real issue is gonna be whether or not the building department says that his neighbor's fence qualifies as a pool fence. Then he needs to check, check with his insurance carrier and find out whether they're gonna agree that somebody else's fence satisfies construction code requirement. So, we, we, we. So we're gonna deny the six-inch variance and just give them the coverage variance, is that what we're doing? Yeah, right.
The question I have is, did you talk to the neighbors about putting the fence up and tying into their fences? Did they have a problem with it?
They did not, I spoke to all of my, the two neighbors that would be impacted, neither of them had any issues whatsoever. They actually suggested that I hook into their fences so it looks more seamless from the street and from a neighborhood standpoint.
That satisfy you, Brian?
Can you get that in writing?
Uh, if I need to get it in writing, I'm sure I can get that in writing for my neighbors.
But in order to hook into his neighbor's fences, he may have to be on the property line.
That is correct.
That's correct, that's correct. So if the neighbors are happy or not unhappy, and they, we document it, I think everybody's. Any other questions by the board?
Just put it in the resolution, the alternative would be to tie into adjoining property defenses, you would grant the, uh, setback variance. If it doesn't work out.
You think that, Mr. King?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Any members of the public have any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm not crazy about hooking into the neighbor's fence without having, s, I, I, I don't know, Mr., I forget who said it, Mr. Chadwick, maybe, I don't know. Uh, without having something in writing or having them here to testify saying that's okay.
We're just gonna put it in the resolution, Dave, that you gotta have that from this, from this next. It's, it's a condition of the resolution.
Yeah, I, I get it, I just hate voting yes on something that we, I, I, I get it, I just, I'm not totally in love with the process of doing that.
Well, what, what, what they have not authorized?
I, I, I'm at a loss for words at this point, I'm sorry.
It's, it's, go ahead, it's fine, it's, go ahead.
Can we grant?
Mr. Chadwick, I understand where you're coming from, but we're try, you know, we've got a heavy agenda here, we're trying to get through it, and we're sucking wind on a six-inch fence, which there's probably fourteen thousand fences in this town that are on the property line, and nobody knows about it.
Yeah, but they're not in front of us.
I'm being, I'm being, uh, aggressive or whatever you wanna say. This is not a major issue. He will get proof provided to, to, uh, Nora as part of the resolution that neighbors don't care. If he doesn't get that, that letter, he doesn't get the variance. About, what, Mr. King?
Correct, we'll, we'll make it subject to the, uh, resolution that he needs to get the, uh, approval by the neighbors.
Notarized.
I, yeah, that's.
Listen, we're protecting the town here, okay? We, 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 we wanna confirm the paperwork, I, I get Mr. Kaplan, I get it, we're, we're wasting a little more time on this.
We'll get Governor Murphy to do an executive.
Yeah, you know what, why not?
Notarized, notarized is fine, notarized is fine, I don't care.
I, I will say.
It's, it's called thorough paperwork.
Some of my neighbors are a little elderly, so I will do my best to make sure we're all in one place to get it notarized. Um, but if, if, if it cannot be notarized, I can also have them send it directly to the town if need be, so it doesn't come through me to verify that it's real.
That seems reasonable.
That's fine, we wanna protect everybody involved, that's all, and we don't wanna hear somebody after the fact.
Any members of the, uh, the public have any questions?
That's fine.
Any hands raised, Nora?
No hands.
Mr. Mateo, you don't wanna testify, I mean, we don't, that's the same, do you? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application?
No hands.
Okay, uh, someone want to make recommendations, we can move on.
I'll be voting to, uh, to recommend this, uh, project, uh, it enhances, uh, the quality of life for this resident who is improving, uh, the appearance and the functionality of his house, and I'll go right into the application. In application twenty forty-six, Michael Di Giuseppe, nineteen Ogden Place, block seven oh eight, lot four R three, that we grant a C variance to construct an irregular in-ground swimming pool and patio and six-foot-high fence contrary to section four thirty dash eleven A and section four thirty dash thirty-five, column thirteen, uh, provided that he, uh, has, uh, he provides, uh, plans for a conforming pool fence that's not scalable and, uh, thorough documentation, uh, from his neighbors approving such project.
Snack and burn.
Just, just to amend that slightly, Mr. Schneider, that, that we're gonna get confirmation from the neighbors of the tying in of the fences. We don't want the neighbors to approve the entire project.
Uh, right, right, I'm sorry, I, I was talking about the fence, right, so, okay, so approval, uh, yeah, that, that's fine, and, and that, that, that is needed, you're absolutely right. So, uh, approval from neighbors, uh, in regards to him tied to an existing, uh, existing neighbor's fences.
There are seconds.
Yeah, Berkowitz seconded it.
Thank you, any discussion? Nora Calderwolfs.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Saad. Ready. Snyder.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Saad, unmute yourself. Ready. Ira King.
Yes.
Yes. We lost a variance granted, uh.
Good news.
Sorry if we, uh, asked you for a couple of additional items, but it's, you know, it's competing, as Mr. Snyder says, to protect the town, okay?
Thank you, I understand completely, and everyone have a good evening.
Good night.
Nora, uh, can we go to the sign one next, is that gonna be a change of application or is that a simple? Cause I think the other two are gonna go longer, aren't they?
That's up to you. They are in attendance.
All right, let's go to that application, cause I think we might be able to do that quicker.
Chairman Ira King, can I interrupt for a second, Mr. Earl?
Yes, whoever is speaking, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Earl IT.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Willins, please keep yourself muted if you're not speaking, it's causing interference in the, in the audio, thank you.
I've been muted the whole time.
No, actually, I keep muting you, I don't know, maybe you're not realizing that you're getting unmuted, but I have been, a number of times I had to mute you, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Earl. Um, okay, case, uh, twenty forty-one, Bops North America Inc. What do we have? Looks like they wanna sign on the side of the building, is there a representative from Bops here for the application?
Hi, yes, uh, I'm Joseph Castor, attorney for the applicant, Krim Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Castor, you can proceed.
All right, good evening, members of the board, uh, we represent Bops North America Inc., the applicant. Application twenty forty-one relates to Bops' new North American headquarters, now located at ten Waterview Boulevard in the P O D zone. This is also known as block four twenty-one, lot twenty-nine point zero two. Um, the application is for a C variance or a bulk variance to install a sign on the front of the building that is higher than the twenty-five-foot limit, uh, in this zone. Um, on this, all other aspects of the sign conform with the zoning ordinance, um, and placing the sign here will place it on the same level of the building as a pre-existing T I A A bank sign uh, at the same site. Uh, in support of this application, we'll have testimony from three professionals, Peter Legati, CFO of Bops North America, who is the representative for the applicant, Cody Baldwin of Studio Eagle, who's the design professional, and Catherine Gregory of Gregory Associates, who's a professional planner, and she'll speak to the zoning ordinance and why this is the most appropriate location for the sign. Um, Bops is seeking this C variance under either C one or C two. Uh, the requirements for C one being that the specific topography of this lot requires that the sign be greater than a twenty-five-foot limit. Um, as you'll see from our, um, digital renderings and pictures of the site, there's a slope in the ground, and in fact, you know, from reviewing the prior application for the T I A A bank sign, um, which was also granted a variance in twenty fourteen, that sign is only thirty-five feet up, so the ground slopes down towards the corner of the building where we intend to put this sign. Um, it also could be granted under C two, which is a grant of this variance would, uh, advance the public good, advance the goals of the zoning ordinance, I'm sure the board is more than familiar with these standards, but I just feel it's good to try and be complete with them, and that the benefits of this location for the sign will outweigh any detriments to the public. Um, this is the most logical, aesthetic, and visible location for the sign. Placing the sign in this location will advance the safety of drivers on Waterview, Waterview Boulevard, and will clearly identify the location of the use and of Bops' new headquarters. Um, the sign is appropriate for the zone in this particular building, and we feel the variance should be granted. Um, I guess a question for Mr. King, as I would like to move to my first witness, would you like to swear the witness is in, or should I?
Uh, I have to swear them in.
Okay. Um, so next I'd like to move to Mr. Peter Legati, he is the CFO of Bops.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear from testimony about to give before the board's choose to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and for the record, uh, you're the chairman, your testimony is gonna be a factual, not expert testimony, correct?
Correct, sure.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn as, um, his testimony is not expert testimony, it is just factual testimony.
You may proceed.
So I just want to, uh, thank everybody for, for having us. Uh, just tell you a little bit, uh, I've had the pleasure of working for Bops for, uh, over twenty-five years. Bops is a company that is, uh, have a hundred thirty-five-year risk his, rich history in business, have been in Roseland since the mid-sixties. And, uh, we've made the decision in two thousand and twenty to move to Parsippany to a, uh, from a owned location to a leased space, and are looking to, um, obviously, uh, to a, uh, from a owned location to a leased space and are looking to, um, obviously, uh, make this space our North American home, uh, headquarters, long-term lease. Uh, we are fortunately in the business of, uh, printing and packaging. That's, uh, an essential business. And, uh, fortunately have done, uh, uh, but we're able to continue to conduct ourselves, uh, partially remote and partially in, in the office during this whole COVID pandemic. But, uh, simply stated, we're, uh, we're happy to be, uh, in our new home, uh, after, uh, you know, uh, being in there since the sixties in Roseland moving and, uh, we just simply are looking for your courtesies, uh, to have the sign on the building, uh, as similar as the sign that's already there.
All right.
Any questions of this witness? Any questions of this witness by the board? Does he have any, you have any questions for him that, or can proceed? Can we proceed? Do you like witness?
Yeah, I would just proceed to my next witness. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let me just see. Any members of the public have any questions to this witness, uh, testimony given? Nora, any hands?
No hands.
Hands. Okay. You can proceed.
Uh, yes, I would next proceed to Mr. Cody Baldwin. And if, uh, if I may apologize for a brief delay, I'm, I'm realizing my ability to share my screen. I have the exhibits that Mr. Baldwin's going to speak to, and I need to adjust my system preferences here. But, uh, Mr. Baldwin works with Studio Eagle. They're the sign design team. Um, and they, he will speak to the location of the sign, the reasoning for the location behind the sign. Exhibits that we presented.
Mr. Bowen, could you raise your right hand? You swear, swear from testimony about to give before the board's choose help you got?
Yes.
And, uh, you're going to provide a testimony with regard to the sign, type of sign? Design the sign, location of the sign?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, he is sworn.
Uh, sorry for the delay. I'm just waiting for the visuals to pop up. Yeah.
We're going to have to give him.
Back to the meeting.
We're going to have to give him, uh, uh, the ability to do this.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I made him presenter.
Uh, I, I'm going to, apparently to allow me to share my screen to show the exhibits, uh, you know, we were requested that one person control the exhibits. Um, it's requiring me to close the application. I'm going to have to close the application and reconnect as quickly as I possibly can. I have them up. Should I just share my screen? Yeah, if you can, please do. Um, can everybody see the site plan? I apologize. I wasn't, uh, prepared to share the screen, but this is, um, the, uh, the site plan and survey that we had, uh, when we began this project. Um, I'm going to zoom in for you guys, um, to the southeast corner along Water View Boulevard. Um, you can see that there are two different parking areas. And there's a, a dramatic shift in elevation from the lot on the right-hand side here where we're proposing the signage and the opposite. Um, and as they mentioned, um, we have the existing T I A A sign here in blue. Um, and the, the, uh, ground slopes down towards the right where we're proposing our new signage. Um, the closest distance to the property line we have shown is about a hundred and forty feet. And it's much further than that from the other property lines. Um, and just wanted to show how the location here certainly helps to direct the traffic for, for BOPS clients and employees straight in through that, uh, adjacent parking, uh, area.
Kathy, is this, is this exhibit provided as part of the package? Or is this a new exhibit with color?
Uh, Mr. King, this is the exhibit that was provided with the application.
With color?
I believe so. Yes, I, I haven't made any, um, adjustments to these documents. These are the, the same that, uh, um, Joseph was prepared to present today.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if there's no other questions about the site plan, I was going to, to move on to our design documents. So you can see what this looks like. Okay, here is, um, the elevation for the right-hand side of the building where we are proposing the sign. You can see that the uppermost portion is shown at forty feet above the, the ground. Um, this is the logical place to put it as, um, um, we mentioned there's an existing sign at the other end of this facade at the same location and scale. Um, I will try to bring that up very quickly. I'm sorry, this was something that I emailed. Apologies. Sorry about that. So this is, this is just taken from Google Street View. Um, um, the, it shows the existing T I A A sign. Again, um, up in that upper, in that top band of the, uh, building facade above the window line. Just wanted to show that is an existing, uh, precedent. And you can see that we've, we've matched that location at the opposite end of the building.
I, I didn't see any Google map view. Did you present that to the board?
Uh, I'm. Uh, it, it wasn't, uh, that was not presented to the board in part of the application. And I, I actually didn't see it on Cody's share screen here either. Um, but I, I'm willing to represent to the board that, you know, as you see that this is one contiguous piece of the front of the building and the T I A A sign is there, but it's, it, as it was not a part of the application package, I think we could just move to the, uh, to the next set of exhibits that were a part of the package. Sorry for any confusion there. Apologies. Um, and then this is the package, uh, that our team worked with the signage vendor to create. The visuals came from our office and the, um, technical detailing came from the, uh, subcontractor. Um, so here is a, a computer rendering showing the exact size and location that we're proposing for the new sign. Um, and shown in, in color, it'll be, uh, black letters with the red, um, uh, squared logo shade. Um, and then just showing a before and after condition on this page. Um, this is showing you, uh, the materials, the color selections, et cetera. I'd like to point your attention to, um, the center where it shows the illumination preview. Uh, one thing to point out about this sign is that the material is opaque. So the light isn't being emitted through the colored face. It is, uh, providing a soft halo glow behind the letters, uh, as an accent. Um, I'm sorry, the, the dimensions here, uh, I wanted to point out as well. Uh, the new sign will protrude a maximum of five inches off the face of the wall, um, which is pretty streamlined considering the halo effect that we're trying to achieve. Um, standard aluminum, uh, framed letters pinned back to the wall with an LED light source. And then here's just a, 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 a general connection detail through the facade of the building. Again, an LED light source is being shown. And that is all I had is as far as the visuals. I'm, I'm happy to try to field any questions you may have or revert back to any particular, uh, page.
Any questions by members of the board?
Will the proposed halo have a, um, uh, a timer or be federal electric? How will it be operating?
Um, I believe that this is going to be on a time clock, but to be honest, I, I am not sure about that. Um, I'm not sure if we have that, if someone else on the team has that information available from Universal Signs.
I have no further questions.
Do you limit the hours of operation with these signs? Does it have to be, it has to be on all?
Uh, if I, if I may, uh, uh, my understanding is that the hours of operation for the sign are restricted to eleven, from eleven PM to seven AM unless the premises are occupied at the time. Um, BOPS will comply with that requirement.
Sounds reasonable. Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions to this witness, um, testimony given? Nora, do you see any hands ready?
No hands.
Next one.
Uh, yeah, our, our. Thank you. I'll, uh, give out control of my screen. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Um, and our next and final witness would be Catherine Gregory of Gregory Associates. She is the professional planner for the applicant.
I'm sorry, ma'am, uh, do you swear from testimony about to give before the board's choose to help you got?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
You've been sworn before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn as an expert.
Mr. Castor, you can.
Uh, so Ms. Gregory, the, um, is your understanding that the premises here are in the P O D zone? And, uh, could you explain for the board what types of signs are permitted in the P O D zone?
Uh, yes. Um, in the P O D zone, the permitted signs are, are all temporary and building identification signs that are permitted in section four thirty dash two eighty-seven. Um, in four thirty dash two eighty-seven, there are several requirements for signs listed A through G. We actually meet all of the sign requirements, which includes, um, uh, the size of the sign um, and others is, but the only one that we don't meet is the fact that we're actually at a height that's higher than what's permitted. Uh, twenty-five feet is the highest that's permitted for a sign and we're at forty feet, which would be a fifteen-foot variance. Um, but I think as you saw on the, um, the photo exhibits, uh, the photo rendering, excuse me, that, um, the, the building is very unique in that it actually has three levels and those three levels actually step back. Um, just as well, you can see that the, the sign is actually located a hundred and forty feet from the closest roadway. And when you look at where the intersection is, it's actually much further. Um, just as well, there happens to be many trees that are located on the property, mature trees. This is an older building, um, which also inhibit the view. Um, so truly what we need is we need that sign to be on the top because it needs to be visible for traffic safety. But just as well, I would also advocate that in most instances, I think that you usually do see signs on the tops of buildings. I think it uh, is a better aesthetic for the building. Um, so I actually think that, um, in terms of, you know, a C one versus C two, I think that we do have some unique conditions for the C one, but for the C two, I think that we do, do promote two of the purposes of the municipal land use law, which would be, um, uh, purpose I, which talks about a desirable visual environment and also purpose H, which talks about the, uh, the traffic routes. Um, so I think that we do fit kind of a flexible C one, C two, um, on this particular piece of property. Cause obviously, um, every application standard zone and it has to be for that specific property. Um, in terms of the negative criteria, I don't think there's any substantial detriment to the public good by granting the variances. I mean, it is located very far away from, um, from the roadway and just as well, there was a sign that was, um, that was permitted to be at thirty feet tall, which I know is only a five-foot variance. Um, but the sign is attractive and it's also right in the middle of the band of the building. Um, and it's of an appropriate size and scale to the size of the building. I also believe that we will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Um, I looked at your, uh, master plan and, uh, the last master plan was actually done earlier this year, um, January sixth, it was dated in twenty twenty. Uh, I'm sorry, of last year, excuse me. Um, and there was no goals and objectives that actually specifically mentioned signage. But in land use plan recommendations, it did talk about signage and lighting requirements. And it did talk about a complete overhaul of the sign ordinance. Now, I don't know, and it talked about aesthetics. Um, but I don't know that it would have regarded height. So we can't really say that at this time because obviously, um, there's usually a lag time between the time that a zoning ordinances changed after the master plan. Um, and we know that we just had COVID in twenty twenty. So I'm not quite sure what that would mean, but I would indicate that I think that we meet the intent of the ordinance. Um, and I think we would meet the intent of the master plan as well, uh, because the sign, I believe, is attractive. Um, so with that said, I do believe we meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the sign variance requested this evening.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Any questions by the board? Any members of the public who have any questions of this witness? I hear none and see.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Castor?
Um, nothing further other than to just, uh, commend Nora Jolie for being incredibly nice to work with. And, um, you know, I hope you all continue to work with her.
We, we love her. She's the best. Um,
Don't let Har- Harriet hear you say that.
Harriet is, was like my, my adopted mother. She was a lovely, lovely lady, lovely lady. Um, she still is a lovely lady. As a matter of fact, she pulled my office for us. All right. So, um, at this point, are there any members of the public who speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and see none. Not a, how do I, how do I know that? Do I know that, Nora?
You're correct.
Oh, God. I think that this, this confinement is finally, finally getting to me. I could deal with it when I looked outside, there was so green grass, but now all I see is white snow. I've, I've had it. I've had it. Anyway. Moving on, uh, would someone like to make a recommendation? There's no, there's no need to go into conflict for this application, is there, Ford? Mr. Chadwick, you're happy? Mr. Mr., uh,
I, I, I think the, I think the case was presented very well. And I think the conclusions are positive.
Someone like to make a recommendation so we can move forward?
I will be voting in, uh, favor of this, uh, application to approve the, uh, height of restriction variance. And I believe the sign is very nice and will assist, uh, people, uh, driving along the road to find the place and, uh, cause, not cause any traffic accidents.
Someone like to make the, uh, move the motion, please?
I'll do it. Application twenty column forty-one, BOPS North America Inc., ten Water View Boulevard, block four twenty-one, lot twenty-nine point two, zone C O D, recommend granted to C variance for signage.
Second person.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz. Jaskowitz.
That was a yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Tariq.
Yes.
Persad.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willens?
Yes.
Ira King.
Yes. Result is the variance is granted. We'll memorialize it in two weeks and, uh, welcome, welcome to the town. Uh, Mr. Legati, I remember when I worked for Cooper's Live brand, uh, many, many, many years ago, uh, you guys were a client of Cooper's Live brand. Is that correct?
Yes, we were. Can you hear me?
Yes. So again, welcome to the, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. We're happy to be here.
Let's go on to the next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time, everyone. Have a good night's evening.
Yeah, good night. Good job.
Does anybody need a potty break or can we move on? Everybody's okay?
I'm good.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to New York Renaissance, 1209 Littleton Road. This is a continuation, right, from February 21st?
Good evening, Chairman. Yes, we are, Chairman. Stephen Tom Belakian from Wiener Law Group on behalf of the applicant, New York Renaissance Group, LLC. Chairman, if you recall, the board has, this is a continuation of the hearing last held back in October. It involves a property at 1209 Littleton Road, which is Block 199, Lot 48.1 in the R3 Zone. What the board heard last year was a proposal for a mixed-use building where there would be apartments above and below a retail or restaurant space. If the board recall, the applicant, New York Renaissance Group, did not have a tenant signed up and did not even know what type of commercial use would be on that first floor of the building. So having received the comments and the feedback from the board as to it's nearly impossible to approve a project without knowing what it is that we're proposing, the applicant went back to the drawing board and deleted the commercial use. And rather than having any commercial use on the property, just added some additional units. So what's now before the board, it's no longer mixed use, it's now a five-apartment building that is designed to look like a house. So what the board heard at the last hearing from Mark Walker, our engineer, regarding site design, is largely still all relevant. We have Mark Walker back tonight to just show the slight changes to accommodate the deletion of the commercial use. But primarily tonight, you're going to be hearing from Carolyn Young, who's the design architect who designed the building. She's going to walk you through the elevations in her floorband, showing how she took advantage of the unique topography on this property to kind of make a very interesting residential development. Since this is the R3 zone, which only allows single-family detached, we are looking for use variance to allow multifamily. But other than that, the design is largely conforming. There is one bulk variance, as far as we can surmise, for lot coverage. But other than that, it's a pretty clean application. We did things a little bit out of order, given the uniqueness of the application. You already heard from John McDonough, our planner. So we're kind of doing things in a little bit of reverse order. So tonight, you'll be hearing first from Carolyn Young, and then just some minor cleanup work from testimony from Mark Walker, and then that's it. That'll be the separate application. So unless the chair or board has any questions for me, I'd like to call my first witness, Carolyn Young.
Why don't you go ahead and call your witness?
Carolyn, her video is on. Welcome, welcome, Carolyn. Mr. King, can we please swear her in?
Yes. Could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's choose to help you God?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Carolyn Young, Y-O-U-N-G, Architect.
And you're a licensed architect?
Yes.
And you've been sworn before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn to provide expert architectural testimony.
You may proceed.
Chairman, would you like to hear a little bit of Ms. Young's architectural background, or is she accepted as an expert in architecture?
We've already qualified her.
Very good.
Well, the fact that she's been, it might not hurt to want to embellish her background a little bit. I'm looking at her plans, and it's quite interesting, so she might be a little takeoff there. Looks like you do nice work, Jim.
Well, I'm always happy to give a little plug for our firm, so, you know. My name's Carolyn Young, Architect. I've been working in New Jersey since I got out of college, since way back in 1985. I've had my own practice here in Morris, located in Morristown since 1996. I work towns all around New Jersey. I drive a lot, so I go west and south and north. I do a mix, we have mixed practice. We're a small firm. We do commercial work and multifamily residential and single-family residential work. My education is Cornell University, and we're here, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you very much, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Okay, now Carolyn, you're going to be presenting tonight. Do you have on the bottom of your WebEx screen, do you have the share feature enabled?
It's in shadow.
Okay.
It just changed.
Okay, very good. Carolyn, so you're going to be taking over the screen if you can. And I believe this plan was submitted, your architectural plan, it's a one-sheet plan, if I'm not mistaken, was submitted, but if Mr. King prefers that it be marked, we could mark it as well.
No, if it was submitted and it hasn't been marked up either with color or anything, then you don't need to mark it.
Thank you, Mr. King. Carolyn, when you get a chance, here we go.
I'm trying.
It's working.
Challenged. All right. Okay, I think I'm getting there. Okay. Okay. Can everybody see that?
If you could zoom in when you're ready to give the details, that would be great.
Yeah. Certainly make it bigger. Yeah, okay. All right, I got it. Okay, so as Steve have already said, this building has changed to be all residential, no more commercial use, which I think, given what I know of the history of the project, I think this is simplifying the use of the building and the overall application. We're proposing five units for this building. All of them are two-bedroom units. There is a lower-level unit, which, when we get to the site plan, you will see is entered from the rear of the building. It's, as I said, two bedrooms, typical to all of them. This is entered from the lower level. And then the units 2, 3, 4, and 5 are all entered from the first floor of the building on the front of the building, which is facing the street. On that level, at the first floor, there are two units, Unit B and Unit C, two bedrooms. And then you go up a common staircase to the second floor, where you enter Unit D and Unit E. Those units are two-story units, two levels, with bedroom on their main floor and a second bedroom in the half-story attic space. The elevations of the building are very simple, very residential in nature. This is the front elevation of the building with just an entry portico, a single door, very simple execution of windows and residential character. And then there are the two side elevations, above and below, which are just similar in their nature. And then you have the rear elevation, which is where you drive down the driveway and you enter into that lower-level unit from the back of the building. We're going to be using residential materials, hardy plank siding, cultured stone at the base of the building, asphalt shingle roof, aluminum gutters, AZAC trims and moldings, residential windows. Again, everything is very residential in nature. I did read the comments from the engineer and planner, and, you know, to confirm that this is a appropriate finished attic. It complies with your half-story requirement. The plate of the level of the attic is actually at the plane of the floor, top of the floor framing from below. So the usable portion of the attic is just this middle section that we show here. So it does conform with your definition of half-story. I think the site plan has been modified, and Mark will speak to that, to speak to the parking at the front of the building and at the back of the building, and the various changes that have come about turning this into an all-residential building.
Carolyn, maybe focusing on the lower level, explain some of the more utility features, how waste is going to be stored, recycling, if there's storage, just could give the board, and I understand that most of that is in the basement level, the lower level.
Well, since we are built into the topography, the back of this unit, which is really towards the front of the building, we have a fair amount of storage space. We'll actually be able to put the mechanical units at this lower level to provide heating and cooling to the first-floor units. And we also have additional storage space down here, which could handle recycling, you know, some storage of materials and supplies. So it's kind of, it's beneficial in a way that the unit isn't taking up all that square footage and that we have that portion that's below grade that we can use for other purposes.
If the board has any questions concerning Carolyn's design, I really have no further questions for her.
I'm sure I understand. So entryway for the attic plan, to get to those apartments in that area, where do they get entryway?
Sure. So the second floor of the building are two duplex units. So they come in the front door at street level. They go up a staircase, which brings them to a common lobby on the second floor, and that's where they enter the door to their unit, Unit D, and on this side, Unit E. Once they're inside the unit, they have their living room, their dining area, their kitchen area, and one bedroom, a bathroom. And then within their unit, they go up an internal staircase here, goes up, which arrives at the top of the stairs and has another bedroom unit and bathroom.
Okay, so as far as any exit from that upstairs area, they have to come back down those stairs through those apartment units to get out. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Carolyn, approximately, how many square feet are these units? Roughly.
Let's see. Do some quick math here. The building is 48, so it's basically half. They're about 1,100 square feet. And the upper unit is probably a little more like 1,200 to 1,300.
Thank you. No further questions.
I'm looking at your report from February 8th, updated at both. Are you satisfied that the answers that are here are acceptable? And now looking at the back, and there's some additional review comments, the proposed drywall, the construction details, the applicant should provide testimony, those last three items, have they been addressed or not?
The drywall topic will be handled by the engineer. I think all of those last. The high boulder wall is also a site engineering topic. And the trash enclosure, all three of those will be discussed by Mark Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there any other questions of Ms. Young, testimony given this evening by the board?
I have some questions, Mr. Chairman. Can I see the first floor diagram? Can you tell me what the size of the bedrooms are?
Yes. We just get a scale. 11 by 13 and 9 and 1/2 by 12. So this bedroom is the 11 by 13, and this bedroom is 9 and 1/2 by 12.
Okay, now can I see the basement apartment?
Yes.
The storage area, is that going to be accessible by the basement apartment?
This one is accessible to the basement apartment, yes.
That's where the mechanicals are.
And storage, mechanical slash storage.
All right, so all right, so the basement apartment won't have any access basically to the front of the building, correct?
Not in this, not right now. It has been something we've been contemplating, possibly trying to get to the common stair, that it might be convenient to do that. So we
And this storage area, you've got marked off. The bigger area, is that supposed to be shared by the four apartments upstairs?
No, this one here, where the cursor is, is the mechanical for Unit B, and there's some storage there. This would be mechanical for Unit C. The storage would be common in here. It's just that it would be the mechanical for Unit C. The mechanical is coming up in these two locations here and here to provide the mechanical, the heat and cooling for these two units. That's being housed here and here. Sorry, here and here, in order to come up in these two spots. The storage would be common.
Where's the mechanical for D and E?
It's upstairs in the unit because we have extra space up there. We can put the mechanicals up here in the attic to supply the heat and cooling to Units D and E.
Is there storage, room for storage in those mechanicals?
There might be a little storage, yeah.
I'm just thinking, these people are going to be living in apartments, and you're going to have someplace to put things that, you know, like normally, people normally put it in an attic or a basement.
Yes. I think that this is actually pretty generous, given designs of, a lot of designs of common contemporary apartment spaces where there really is not very much storage provided. I think having these storage areas and also some extra storage up here is probably more than most apartments offer.
All right, thank you. I don't have any further.
Any other members of the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
Could you bring the screen up for the elevations? Or the portion of that plate? The front elevation, those two domes, they're just fake, right?
Correct, yeah.
Could they be made so that you could address the storage needs a little bit better by opening them up?
Yes. I mean, there will be access into these, again, probably just for mechanicals and ductwork and stuff. Yeah, they could have, you know, they will have the benefit of some storage space. There's obviously
There will be some form of access there.
Yes.
All right, and did you consider shutters for the front of the building?
I I thought about it, but, you know, shutters traditionally, shutters are intended to be the dimension of the windows and have a function to them. and have a function to them, so I always question putting shutters on as such as a decorative element. So I chose not to, thinking that it might just make it busier than it needs to be.
Is that the answer you're looking for, Mr. Chadwick?
I, I just thought that wall without some kind of op to it was going to be pretty bland. And I heard what was said, and I know, you know, simple is always an architectural style. Because the doorway has got a little bit of interest.
I mean, we see shutters all the time, everywhere, it's ubiquitous. And shutters are always used now in ways that isn't really traditional with their intent. I mean, putting shutters on this would be, would be okay. I don't, not opposed to it, I just didn't think that it would.
I'm not trying to play architect.
Okay.
To Mr. Chadwick's point, if you look at the surrounding properties, I believe the majority of them, it's pretty congruent with the majority of surrounding houses in that area.
Ms. Snyder, that means the houses in the surrounding area have those fridge shutters as decorative elements on the window? Like the windows, yes?
Sure, I mean, I would yield to your professionals going out there and seeing it, but yes.
Yeah, we know what, on behalf of the applicant and, you know, subject to Carolyn agreeing, we would be amenable to presenting of that plan, like, and, you know, letting the board's professionals let us know if they believe a shuttered plan is a preferable look, and we'd be happy to provide those. You know, that way, Mr. Chadwick would be able to see, yeah, as a condition of approval, what the building would look like with shutters, and if, and if the board professionals believe that that's more consistent with the neighborhood design, we'd be happy to provide them.
I just want to, I just want to comment as well, I received these plans. Do you know when you sent them in the mail, Nora?
Not off the top of my head.
Yeah, I didn't get them until Monday, and I just couldn't switch schedules around in order to get a written report, and I apologize to the applicant for that, because there's going to be some comments on the site plan as well.
That's, that's, we have to apologize for that. We only got them to Nora, I believe, on the 27th.
Yeah, you made it, you made it, you made your 10 days. Of course, you know, there was some weather interruptions and what have you, so maybe that's the excuse. Flipping the page, I don't have any questions from Ms. Young any further, but you said you're not going to invite John McDonough back. Just to put on the record, you've got five units. However, you're taking down an old house. And the town ordinance doesn't say whether occupied or not, so you actually have four, which makes you exempt from providing an affordable housing unit. You are subject to the Affordable Housing Development.
Yep, we understand, Mr. Chadwick.
Okay. I have no other questions on the architecture, Mr. Hurricane.
Okay, well, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Okay.
Unless, Mr. Chairman.
If there's any members of the public that have any questions, have you asked that yet? Any hands raised, Nora?
No, and there's no hands raised.
Okay, let's go ahead with the next one.
Thank you, Carolyn. I'd like to call Mark Walker. Carolyn, if you could end your screen share, that would be great. Mark Walker was previous one, and he testified at the two prior public hearings, and let's get Mr. Walker, there he is, welcome, Mark. Mark, you do acknowledge you remain under oath from the October meeting?
Yes, I do.
Okay, now, Mark, you heard Carolyn's testimony, you worked with Carolyn to revise your site design to accommodate her new architectural design. Do you have the ability to screen share?
I do, yes, I do.
You can bring up your, the exhibit, which will need marked, your site plan exhibit, not the site plan itself, but the colorful exhibit you prepared. And then we'd need that one marked.
What are you going to mark it?
I gotta find it first here.
If Nora kept a list of the numbers, because I don't have my notepad from October, unfortunately.
There we go, can everybody do that?
Yes, Mark, one thing, we're going to have to figure out the exhibit number for this. Because I misplaced my notes from October, unfortunately.
Do you want to mark it as A1 and today's date?
That works, Mr. King, thank you. So, Mark, this is going to be exhibit A1, February 10, 2021, can you describe this exhibit for the board?
Yeah, this is actually a modified exhibit that we presented at the last meeting, it now has a revision date of 2/9/2021. And it's a colored rendering of the site plan that we submitted, the latest date of the site plan has a revision date of January 26, 2021.
Mark, can you walk through the board describing primarily what has changed from the original site design that they heard last October?
Right, I think Carolyn did an exceptional job in her testimony, the architecture looks great. Looks like a big, single-family home as you travel down the road. As you recall, we have a commercial site directly to the north of us. Single-family residential property to the south of us. And we had some wetlands on the property. We, we did obtain a transition area modification on our original site plan at the back of the building. We had a much larger parking area due to the reduction or the elimination of the commercial use and just going to a residential use. We've simplified the site substantially, reduced the intensity, reduced the impervious coverage, and obviously reduced the parking spaces needed. And just following up on Carolyn's discussion, the front door is located right at the front of the street. We have a sidewalk in the front, we have a mailbox, and we're also proposing an address right at the front of the building. We do have accessible through the front door. We have four apartments, two on the first floor, two on the second floor. That leaves us with the need for eight parking spaces to access for those particular units, there's two parking spaces required for each unit, and within the two parking spaces, there is one half of a visitor parking space. So we need eight parking spaces, we have nine parking spaces in the front parking lot. And then to access the rear unit, there's a separate entry at the back of the building. We have four parking spaces to the rear. Two would essentially be used for the basement area. And then we'd have two extra parking spaces in the back and one extra parking space in the front. Again, because we don't have this large parking area, this provided us to, this provided an ability for us to provide a, an outdoor lawn, common area for all the residential tenants. And now there's an outdoor space, whereas before that did not exist, per the site. The impervious cover was reduced substantially. You know, looking at the residential, residential improvement standards for the R3 zone, so just for a single-family home, we actually allowed 30% coverage for just a single-family home. And even with the parking and the access drive, we're at 32.4% with this layout, which is very close to being in compliance with the residential, residential zone. We did, originally, we had the air conditioning units right at the back of the building, kind of pinched in there because of the parking area. We were able to relocate those air conditioning units to the north side of the building. And also, since we do have four out of the five tenants having their primary access, actually their only access through the front door, we've relocated our garbage area from the back of the building, which, which got moved to the front of the building. So the way that the garbage works is we have a gate at the front and we have a gate at the back. People will bring their garbage from the sidewalk, use the common area for the handicap parking space, enter into the garbage area, which is fenced by a six-foot-high board-on-board fence. So none of the garbage receptacles can be viewed from the street or from the parking area. Then on one side is the garbage, and on the opposite side is the recycling. And there's a clear five-to-six-foot-wide access aisle that goes between the garbage cans. And on garbage day, the back end of the garbage area opens up. People can bring their garbage cans out to a concrete pad that we've placed directly on the front property line. That'll be accessible by the garbage trucks to pick up the garbage and leave the, leave the garbage cans on the pad. And then they'll be replaced back within the corral area. So those are really the, primarily the big changes. Because there was a reduction of impervious coverage, we were able to reduce the number of drywells that are required. There is some, there are some comments at the back of the report by Mr. Hallaway. One is about the drywall locations, we'll take a look at those and move those to accommodate his comment. We will also provide a construction detail for a three-foot-high boulder retaining wall, which we placed in the back, the back area, up against our transition area modification to maximize the green space for the residential tenant. And then I just provided some testimony about how we're going to manage the garbage. I'd also like to mention that we've done some calculations, we've determined that the earthwork for the site is balanced, so there's no soil-moving permit required. That's my direct testimony, I'd be glad to take, I know this gives Chadwick some questions relative to the site plan. Be glad to take any questions the board may have.
So, would you please explain the little jog as you're entering and leaving the property? I was always curious about that.
Very good point, so we have county approval. Originally, our driveway was on the north side of the property. The county made us put the driveway on the south side of the property. And because of their curb clearance requirements from the edge of the property line, we had to jog the driveway instantly.
One further question, the proposed sidewalk. If I was a resident and I had friends and I wanted to walk from the back unit to the front unit, I would have to walk all the way around the curb landscaped area. Would the sidewalk be best, and the front sidewalk be best coming out directly to the paved area?
Well, we have a, we have a grade drop on the edge of the sidewalk to the access road. So we could put it in there, but we would require steps in that area. So we have no objection to putting that in, we'd need steps in the handrail.
That's just something for consideration, but you'd be best to, to look at that to see if it's valuable or not.
Mr. Walker, are you providing any recreational spot to the rear of the building, like maybe a couple of picnic tables? A barbecue grill or something like that, that the residents could use, common, common areas?
I, I, I don't believe that our applicant would have any objection to that. We do have a nice space for it in this area, behind the building and the parking area.
I think that would be a nice amenity. Is Mr. Chadwick still here? He had questions of Mr. Walker, I believe. You hear Mr. Chadwick?
I do, but I was going to let the board members ask whatever questions they had first.
Well, why don't you go first, because you have two my answers. The testimony after your questions might answer everybody else.
The explanation of how the parking spaces were assigned, it seemed to be that you said the only, the four apart, apartments on the first and second level were only accessible from the front. And I'm looking at the architectural plans, and isn't there a stairway going up?
From the basement?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've actually talked about it, the staircase going from the first floor down to the basement only leads to those mechanical storage rooms. There's no, there's no exit out the back of the building. They would have to go through, through the private apartment in the basement to walk through the building out to the backyard.
Okay.
And Mr. Chadwick?
Because, because what I, I'll tell you, what I was thinking, if you look at this aerial photograph, you see the houses are mostly 40-foot, which is what the ordinance requires, off the street. And I was thinking of expanding the parking lot in the back, pulling the whole building closer to Littleton Road. But given the internal design, and I don't have an issue with the way you get in and get out of the apartments, it probably makes some sense. Then you get to the issue of whether or not a parking lot is the front view from Littleton Road is characteristic of this section of Littleton Road, and it's not. You know, the homes are lined up along the road, a lot of them have view driveways, whatever, so they don't have to back out into Littleton Road. I think we're going to have to deal with some kind of a landscaping plan. And maybe, there's a couple of pretty good-sized trees in the front yard. Is, the property's pretty flat. It might be possible to maybe add a space or two in the back and leave a tree in the front yard area, I'm not exactly sure. It doesn't show any tree locations on it, so it's kind of guessing and using aerials to deal with that, but the landscaping plan, I think if the board approves this huge variance and the the site plan, then I would suggest that the landscaping plan be a subject to item, and possibly as well as preserving those mature trees in the front yard area and expanding the parking lot in the back. I think the distribution would still be pretty good and, and and go over to Walker's arguments.
Right, yeah, I mean, you make a good point, it truly is a balance between, you know, we've left this nice green area, which is a really great thing for the residents in that building. But as you mentioned, we do. But as you mentioned, we do have a parking lot in the front of the building. You know, we also have this commercial space next door, so it's kind of a nice transitional use coming back here. We do have room for two parking spaces in the back, so there is a potential to eliminate a couple of parking spaces in the front and supplement them in the rear.
I think you would make it, the view from the roadside, cutting back on that parking lot on the front side would really enhance the picture of the building and just the view from the roadside.
Right. Like, for instance, these first two parking spaces, is that what you're thinking about?
Yep. I don't know exactly where the trees are. I've been, I've been in the property a couple times, but I just, you know, someplace, you must know where they are, so.
Right, right. So if we, if we got rid of two parking spaces?
We're not gonna solve it right now. It's, just make it, if you get your approvals, subject to a revised landscaping plan consistent with this discussion.
You know, John, there's a lot of old trees in this town, and they look nice, but you know, unbeknown to the homeowner, they're rotting away on the inside of the parking ramps and things like that.
Yeah, we're not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna keep anything that's about ready to die, but there's, I think there's an opportunity to soften that look a lot.
But also, the disturbance of so much of the soil here could disturb some of these old trees. How about as a fallback position, if the trees can't be saved, they do a nice little ornamental corner here, which Mr. Walker was pointing to, and maybe, you know, some nice evergreens, something which adds up to think, as an alternative to saving trees. If they can't save the trees, maybe do.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
The applicant's fine with that.
It's, the whole purpose is to get the parking lot out of the, dampen it or screen it or, you know, just get it more residential, soften it a lot.
soften the look a little bit. I agree.
That's perfect for the applicant.
Mr. Chadwick, you have any other questions for Mr. Walker?
So I just, let me just add one thing, I'm just kind of conceptualizing on what this design would look like. So it looks like we would most likely need a six-foot-high retaining wall to make these, this last parking space work over here. Are there any zoning issues with a six-foot-high retaining wall?
I think that's, you might have to terrace it. I'll have to look.
We don't have, we don't have room to terrace it, because this is the limit of our transition area area.
Let's, I, I think we're way out of ourselves. Let's, let's see what we can come up with, if you get your approvals.
I, I have a question for Mr. Chadwick. The parking as outlined by the applicant, is that gonna be sufficient and does that really reflect reality relative to residents living in the suburbs? I mean, you know, you have one-bedroom apartments where, you know, two people share a bedroom and they have two cars. And then I think earlier in the testimony, it says two parking spots for each tenant with one half stall dedicated for their visitors.
The answer to your question is yes. We've heard about it a zillion times, RSIS, that's the residential site improvement standards. Says two cars for two, two-bedroom apartment. They've, they've got a couple extra. They'd only need, need to have ten, they got, what is it, thirteen? So.
We have thirteen.
They've got some over. Not gonna take.
But if, if, if two tenants or three tenants at the same time have a visitor, where would that overflow go potentially?
No, you're right. You're right. If, if, you know, people start having big parties and everything else, you know, are they gonna go park in the school or park behind the stick? I don't know where they're gonna go. But those are the things that residential, the problem you have is all municipal values are bounded by that RSIS standard. That's it. And whether you like it or don't like it, you know, what you bring up is, you know, all of it, name it, they're not gonna park along Littleton Road. I don't think.
Yeah, it's not a matter of whether I like it or not, it's reality versus myth. And, you know, and what's gonna transpire if we approve this.
Well, the parking for the units is, meets the standard. And it more than meets the standard. They've got extra spaces to the extent of, I guess almost thirty percent. Is it thirteen spaces or twelve?
We have thirteen and we're required to have ten.
Right, so you're thirty percent over. You know, that sounds like a big percentage, but you're right, Nancy, I mean.
It's reality. I mean, it's reality. Yeah, if nobody, of course they're over, if nobody has a, has a guest.
But that's like the single-family house with a driveway. Have a big family get together.
And it's twelve plus one handicap, so theoretically, if there's no one who's handicapped. And I don't think anyone's gonna be getting up on the attic or the second floor.
No.
Mr. Crawford, I, the, I'd like to, a little clarification on the garbage area. Just a little unclear here. Do you expect the garbage truck will be pulling into the property to go pick up garbage? I didn't quite understand. Each individual unit's gonna have their own garbage can inside of this walled-off area, and they're gonna go out on garbage pickup days and take their garbage can and pull it out of that area? And the garbage truck is gonna pull into that area and put it in the garbage truck?
No, no. The garbage truck comes along on the road.
Right.
And will stop, stop at the neighbor's house, pick up the garbage at the street.
Yep.
Once he's done there, he's gonna continue northbound. He's gonna stop right in front of this area, and he's gonna pick up the garbage cans that are on this concrete pad. And then he's gonna put the garbage cans back. And just like any other residential neighbor on the street, the tenants will come out, collect their garbage cans, and put them back in the corral.
All right, thank you.
Pretty, it's actually, it's organically set up very nicely.
Any further questions for Mr. Walker?
Any other questions for Mr. Walker? Any members of the public have any questions with Mr. Walker? I haven't, I don't see any. Do I see any?
You do not.
Just to interject, I would have Mr. Walker just acknowledge that he received the engineer's report. And if he has any questions regarding that report or if anything will be conforming when the application is submitted.
Mark, do you agree to comply with Mr. Holloway's comment letter?
Yes, we do. We have no problem addressing all of his comments.
Thank you.
You have another witness?
No, no further witnesses, Chairman. Our, our case is done.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application, nor any?
No hands.
Members of the board that it appears that the applicant has completed his testimony in his application, at this point, we recommend that we go into conference if we're so inclined. Someone ought to make a motion to that effect, or we just go to a recommendation? It says D variance, right?
The only question I, the only question I have is, the only variance other than the D we're granting is the block coverage?
Correct.
That's the only bulk variance?
Yes, sir.
I don't need a conference, I don't think. It's up to anybody else.
Okay, I'm assuming the lack of any response means that we can get someone to make a recommendation on this and we can go ahead and vote. It appears that we're all in agreement that this is a good application. If someone doesn't think it's a good application, please speak now. I don't, I don't wanna hear it.
It's a good, it's a good application. I just don't like the parking situation, but RSIS dictates otherwise, and I just think it's gonna be, you know, a parking mess. But other than that, it's, it's definitely a much improved application from what they first presented.
So that sounds to recommendation by Mr. Snyder. Would someone like to have a resolution, or do we want to authorize the attorney to draw up a resolution incorporating all the civilian points that we've got over today in conjunction with the applicant's attorney, so that we have a clean document? Does that make?
That makes a lot of sense, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Yeah, that would be a best approach.
Okay, Mr. Williams, is that your, is that in your motion?
Yes, it is, sir.
And Mr. Snyder, do you second it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora Colton Roll.
Yes.
Ruskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Is that a yes? Kaplan?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Pareek?
Yes.
Prasad?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hurricane?
Yes. Results of variance are granted.
Thank you very much, Chairman, Board. Great to see you. Hopefully I can see you in person soon.
You'll work the concept with Mr. King to get this resolution drafted, correct?
Will do. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Well, we got one more. Application twenty eighteen, is the applicant here? Mr. Sheppes, I think I see you.
Yes, yes, here I am. I had to find the O U button. Good evening. Yes, we're here and we're ready to go.
You may proceed.
Very good. Well, we, something unusual has happened since the last time we appeared before you. We were able to modify the plans and eliminate the one D variance that we had, the D1 variance, I'm sorry, D3 variance, by modifying the architectural plans and eliminating the non-compliant condition. We received memo from Mr. Chadwick confirming that the plan as now shown is in full compliance with the conditional use requirements for apartments above commercial in the B5 zone. Likewise, Mr. Chadwick agrees that the use variance previously granted by the board relative to the yoga studio runs with the land, despite the fact that we are changing the building. The board, of course, still retains jurisdiction of the application of Section seventy-six B of the MLUL, the site plan in conjunction with a use variance that was previously granted. So we're here tonight with some plan revisions. The project architect, Mr. Bias, is here. He's going to show you what he did in order to eliminate the D3 variance in the building and how he was able to address other issues that were raised prior here in December. So, Mr. Bias, are you out there in cyberspace somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Oh, very good. Mr. Walker is gonna help you, I think, or if you have the ability to share the screen, and you can show the board your revised architecturals and just walk us through the changes that have occurred.
And, Mr. Chairman, he's been sworn prior. He still understands that he's under oath.
Yes, sir. Okay, well, Mark's trying to get that set up. Basically, what, what the revision included, where we tried to align the first floor to second floor with similar floor areas. So right now, the project before you has a first-floor area of two thousand four hundred and fifty-two square feet. The second floor has a similar floor area of two thousand four hundred and fifty-two. If you remember, the second floor is three two-bedroom apartments. And the first floor at ground level is two spaces at this time. One will be the yoga studio, and then we will have a tenant's base on the Beverwick roadside of the property. And these floors are constructed over a full basement. The way we were able to do this is we increased the ground floor area by approximately one hundred and eighty-two square feet, and we decreased the second floor area by five hundred and sixty-three square feet. That's, that's a basic summary of the floor plan changes with regard to the floor area. The building characteristics stay the same with regard to the fenestration and finishes. And the only other modification that the board would probably understand is that we eliminated one of the staircases, which provided the extra square footage to make this balance possible. The building would still be compliant. We have to construct this building in accordance with the current building code, so the building, once again, as we've mentioned before, is fully sprinkled, all levels are fully sprinkled. And each of the levels complies with the Egress requirements for, for that use and the stories above the grade and below grade.
Sir, this is IT. You're sharing a blank screen.
Nice.
Mark?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're not seeing anything here.
I'm sorry about that.
Are you there, Mark?
Mr. Walker has my documents for that, so I don't.
I'm here. So you can't see my screen. How about that? No? Can you hear me?
No, here you find, the screen you're sharing is not the one you want to. Do you have multiple screens?
I have a lot of things going on, 'cause I have the other, let's see, my next sentence.
Yeah, I'm IT, I get it.
I believe the board has copies, if they wanna just continue while Mark gets that up.
It says I'm sharing one application.
We can't see anything.
Mark, maybe you turned your camera off. You can't see your face. Mark, turn your camera on. Maybe you turned your camera off, because you can't even see your face.
I don't think that matters.
And now we see you, but nothing else.
Should we go to a commercial break?
When you go to screen share, it should show you a picture of what you're sharing. So please try and pick the right one.
Well, I know that I may have to close out, open up the PDFs, and then come back in to the application, which could be a pain in the neck.
Okay, let's take a moment and try doing that. That may work.
Let's try, let's try this. Let me try rebooting one time.
Nora, did you send us what Mr. Crawford's trying to get up? Do we all have it?
If it was sent to me, it was sent to you.
Yeah, I had delivered the drawings right to Nora, so you might have the copies of the, of the drawings that I revised.
How about that?
Yes, 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 yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mark.
No, camera off.
So this would be, Mark has just brought up sheet A1 of our, our four-page set, and that shows the parking lot facade, the signage detail, and some of the windows and doors associated with that side. You'll notice there's three signs on this facade. Those signs will be illuminated by gooseneck external fixtures that would shine down upon that sign, so there would be no internal illumination on that sign. If you could go to the next page, Mark, that'd be great. If you could go to the next page, Mark, that'd be great. Sheet two has a basic description of each of the first and second floor plans with an associated unit description. You'll notice that the first floor has three primary, actually four sets of doors. The first door goes into retail space one. The second door from Beverick Road goes into a common vestibule. That vestibule is the primary and only entrance to the apartments above. And at the same time, it has a secured door of the corridor that would take you to the basement. And then retail space two has two pair of doors with the potential to split that retail space in half in the future if need be. The restroom shown on these plans are purely for schematic reasons, identifying the size of a standard handicap restroom area that would be required in each of the spaces. The second floor is just the three two-bedroom apartments, similar to what we had presented in the first in the first round of this application. You come up from the stair below to like an upper landing. That upper landing then splits you to a corridor to your right and a staircase to your left. The staircase to your left is five risers and that takes you into unit 201, which is a two-bedroom apartment. The opposite side is a staircase that takes you into the primary corridor that provides access to unit 202 and 203. And that's a basic understanding of this plan.
What about the basement plan, Mr. Bias?
The basement plan would be on A4.
As Mark is bringing that up, is it fair to say that based upon your revisions, the overall square footage of the entire building has been reduced by approximately 300 and something, 320 square feet?
381 square feet on the first two floors.
So it's a little smaller than what we showed the board in December.
Right, so this is just a basic plan for the downstairs. Providing compliant egress to the upper corridor, which takes you out to the parking lot. The use of this space could be clarified by the applicant, I guess, in her testimony.
Well, I would state for the board that the basement would be used exclusively for storage associated with the other uses.
Absolutely, and it's also sprinkled.
So no residential, no commercial?
That's correct.
When you say storage for the associated use, you're referring to the commercial use and not the residential use in the basement?
There is the possibility, depending on the tenant's preference, that we could give them some storage space in the basement. It seems that people have more stuff than they can fit within their living space. And it may be nice to offer them an area in the basement that they could put their Christmas decorations, you know, whatever else one would store over the summer months, the Christmas month, winter months, some months, if they're not using. So we gave that some thought. We think it may be a good idea, but a developer.
I think Ms. Snyder is getting to the point where she'd like to have it in the resolution, correct?
Okay, well, then we have it. Then you can have.
Yeah, because my follow-up question is how you're dividing all this to what you're talking around.
Yeah, you know, we were considering possibly something like an fenced area with a gate and a lock. I mean, I've seen that work in tenant spaces where a tenant would have an area and it would be behind a lock gate. Sure, your stuff.
Something like cages where you have wire fencing between the units so that it circulates, but.
Yeah, wood studs and chicken coop, right? Chicken coop covering, like something like that?
Perfect.
But again, I go back to that basement being for residents on the second floor and not necessarily for your commercial tenants, or is it going to be a hybrid of the two?
Hybrid of the two.
All right, well, then wouldn't we have to discuss what could be stored underneath because, right, we still don't know what those retail units are, correct, or who's going to be occupying them?
Well, we do know that the entire area on the second, on the first floor where the large space is unit two will be used by yeah, for the yoga studio. So we know that. There is some limited storage associated with that business, but not an awful lot, some business records, some equipment, but really not much. The other use, the retail use, depends on what's in there. If we get somebody that sells dry goods, they may have the need for a storage space in the basement. Storage is always helpful. Whether they use it all or only use half, at least it'll be available. And considering the size of the basement of being more than 2,000 square feet, it would seem reasonable that we can give at least 200 square feet to each one of the residential tenants so that they have an area down there where they can store their stuff. I think it's a nice selling feature or renting feature where people have the ability to put some stuff.
What security technology will you have in place for the common vestibule area?
Mr. Bias?
And get, I'm sorry.
The latest high-definition camera and audio security system provider.
Okay, but how do they get in? I'm sorry, how do they get in? Are they going to have to, do they have a card? Do they have to put in a PIN number? How does that work? Or does any, can anybody just walk in?
Well, I'm not, I'd have to speak with the owner on that. I don't know what they would provide for that. Is that a code? It's not a code question, so it'd be more of a lifestyle question, I guess. And that would be between the tenant and the owner, I would imagine.
We can make a reasonable accommodation for that. There should be some level of security so that people can come walking in off the street and go down there.
The basement would not be available. That clearly would be a keypad or some kind of a touchpad to prevent access from the general public to the basement. But as with regard to getting upstairs, I'm sure there's several options available to us.
Any other questions of this witness?
I just wanted to ask you much, Chairman. This is Casey. Is there any laundry facility in this building?
Yes, sir. Each of the units would be provided with a stackable washer and dryer in the larger of the closet areas. If you want to go back to that floor, we've identified two storage areas on the apartments to the right, and we'll have to show. Yes, sir, right, so in unit 202, adjacent to the bathroom, you would see a large closet in the hallway that would be available for a stacked washer and dryer unit. We have that similar condition in unit 203. And earlier today, we devised a new closet for unit 201 that is adjacent to the existing bedroom there. So each of the three units would have a washer and dryer within the rental apartment.
Thank you.
Any other questions, boys?
Yeah, can somebody refresh me on the memory, my memory on the parking now? What, the parking's still the same? What's that looking like, please?
Mr. Walker will address that. He's up next.
Then can I see the first floor plan again? Okay, all right. So to the right is yoga and to the left has yet to be identified.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just as clarification, we agreed at the last meeting that we would not have a sit-down restaurant in the building due to the parking variance that is necessary. However, there are a multitude of other retail-type and service-type uses that are permitted in the B5 zone, which we would be open. Yoga is not one of them.
And to date, the owner has not, has the owner been engaged in any type of, even if it's tentative negotiations with any potential future renters?
Not as of yet. We're hoping that if we build it, they shall come.
Okay, thank you.
You also mentioned, you also mentioned the storage space, it could be divided into two commercial areas, correct? So there would be three commercial potentials on the lower floor here?
There could be, yes, sir, that could be.
Okay.
But you testified that all of it is being, will be occupied based on today's plans to be the yoga facility, correct?
I believe that's the case. Mr. Sheppis would have to.
Yeah, retail space two is proposed to be the yoga studio. That's why we're here before this board because that use is not permitted in the zone. So we're here for a site plan review now for that use because it's a different space. So the answer is yes. Retail space two is proposed to be used for the yoga studio and retail space one is yet to be determined to be otherwise compliant use in the B5 zone. I would point out that our parking calculations are based on the gross square footage. And oddly enough, this parking ratio for yoga studio is exactly the same for retail. So Mr. Walker will get into those numbers. But if you were to take the yoga space and divide it into two separate retail spaces, parking ratio remains exactly the same.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, that's all we have for Mr. Bias.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mark.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple real quick ones.
Oh, go ahead, Chadwick. I'm sorry.
If you could bring up the elevation to show the front and rear of the building. Beverick roadside in the back of the building.
Okay, that's the next sheet, right?
Yeah, it kept coming up.
There you go, sheet three.
No, no, keep going.
There you go.
That's it. Well, can you bring it down just so we can see the front and rear elevation? Those jobs that are on this building, you got brick veneer and you got siding and then you've got what in that white area on?
That would probably be plaster or just a panel, an MDF panel.
You're not going to carry those finishes through to that job on the Beverick roadside?
No, that's primarily to support the signage and have a presentation on the main commercial side. There would really be no need to carry it to the back or the opposite side. The two opposite sides face a residential area, so that would, the horizontal siding and the brick veneer would be in conformance with the existing vernacular there on that side of the project.
Looking at the Beverick roadside to the left side of that elevation, that is going to be a stucco surface.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure which one you're speaking of.
The north Beverick front elevation.
Yes, sir.
Side of that elevation.
That would, at the top would be siding and the bottom would be brick veneer.
Well, that was my question. Well, okay, sudden show on this drawing. Those areas you just had your cursor on would be the same as the other portion of that drawing.
Correct, minus the flat plaster panel.
Yeah, now, in the letter of Mr. Walker, they said there was not going to be a sign on the Beverick roadside. Why is that?
I think we decided to put the pedestal sign out in the front of the building.
You could have both. It would seem
Why?
That whoever rents that front space is going to want to have a sign on Beverick Road.
Good point.
Now, you're not a corner lot, so you'd need a variance for it because you've got signs going. I mean, the front of this building is really facing the parking lot. So it would seem to me that you would ask the board for that variance. And the pedestal sign, one plan shows it on a pole and the other shows it mounted on a, we'll call it pedestal. And I think that's the one that I would recommend to the board.
We'll do that. We'll go.
I got a question to that point. So John, you're saying that next to the second floor residential window, you want to put a commercial sign? Well, to the right of it?
In that band. Our previous application had a sign above the going to be on the gooseneck. You're not going to be and the sign proportioned to that area, that thing, you know, I think if they had used a third of that strip, that would be proportioned, meaning you'd have with that building there, 20 something?
It's about 28, I think, on that side.
Yeah, so you'd have roughly 10 feet, a sign and 10 feet.
Yeah, that, yeah, that face, well, that portion of the building is 23 feet. You could have a 8-foot sign or similar to the window size.
Yeah.
There could be more signs than windows in the.
We don't have any sign, side sign. We removed the sign.
I understand what you removed. I'm just, I thought the original plan was as the applicant just stated.
I just think that it's going to come back and come back. Might want to regulate it now.
I can understand why if somebody rented that spot, they would certainly want an identification sign on the building. I've seen it happen. So if the board would graciously allow us to amend the application, we'd have for a 24-square-foot sign on that side, eight feet by three feet, so that this way it's proportional, yet it's enough to identify.
Why don't you make the sign eight by two? That'll give you a stand between the border of the area, same as you show on the other side.
Yeah, I mean, you are a combination residential and commercial, so you can't flip both sides of the coin and wanting, you know, the hugest sign on a building and, you know, cite the retail advantages. And then when it suits you, you flip it and it's like, well, it's still residential.
Understood. What would be the recommendation, Mr. Chadwick, on the size of the signs?
Two by eight.
So you think all the signs should be two by eight?
Yes.
All right, well, then we'll go with that. How's that? By eight. So there's 16 square feet each. We have potentially three on the parking lot side and one on Beverick.
And they are not internally lit.
They'll all be externally illuminated.
Goosenecker equivalent.
Yeah, goosenecker equivalent.
Okay, agree.
And you'll bend those architectural plans to add the brick and the siding to those.
Yes, sir. I could do that, absolutely. And I'll add the signage on there as well. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Okay, I don't know if there's anybody from the public. Otherwise, we can move on to Mr. Walker.
Nora, anybody from the public want to speak to this, ask questions at this point? Is any hands raised?
No hands raised.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Sheppis, the next witness.
All right, very good. Our next witness is Mr. Walker. As you may recall, Mr. Walker testified previously, is accepted as a licensed professional engineer and he was sworn. So, Mr. Walker, would you please put your most recent version of the site plan and/or rendering as you would care, and then likewise just tell us what happened since the last time we were here before the board as it relates to your claim, your exhibits.
Okay, just to confirm, can everyone see this?
Let's get here.
Yeah, let me see it. Yes.
Thank you. All right. Let me lift up a little bit. Okay, so there were a few things that have happened here. Obviously, the biggest one was the elimination of the D variance by matching the two floors.
Mr. Walker, do you, excuse me, do we want to mark this? This is a new? This is new, correct?
Yeah, we'll mark it.
This is new, that's correct.
I have up to A3. I think we're at A3.
Okay, A3.
So it's a revised.
A3 is entitled Site Plan Exhibit. It's an aerial photograph with a colorized site plan superimposed. The date of the exhibit is 2/8/2021. Okay, as I mentioned, we did have, we had a lot of good feedback at the last meeting. We have made some plan changes. We've also talked to some. We've also talked to some of our neighbors around the neighborhood. And as a result, we've eliminated the D variance by matching the two lower floor and upper floor area. We've eliminated the dumpster at the back of the, back of the site within the fifteen-foot landscape buffer. We have relocated the garbage cans and the recycling cans along a walkway that wraps around the back of the building. So, we'll be placing the garbage and recycling cans in that area. We've also relocated air conditioning units that were along the, I guess, the easterly side of the building. We put them on the northerly side of the building. And that gave us a space for the residence. We don't show, similar to the last application, we do have an area for a picnic table and a barbecue grill, which I'm sure the applicant would be glad to install within this area. In discussing the application with our neighbor who is directly to the, to the south of us, or actually to the east of us, he's a lot three, block five eleven, and he runs on Taiga. We spoke to him, he actually reached out to us. Originally, we had the fence offset from his property line, and we had a row of giant green arborvitae along the property line. He said that if we did what we were going to do, he would just put a fence right along his property line, and then we would have these green giant arborvitae surrounded by two fences. So, what we've effectively done is we shifted the fence to the property line at the request of the neighbor, and we put the trees on the inside of the fence, on the inside of our property line. He still wants the trees, he feels that the trees are ultimately gonna grow relatively tall, and they will provide some screening. I would also like to mention that by eliminating the improvements in this little green area that we had shown, we're actually complying with the fifteen-foot buffer, green buffer space, which is the closest point to our neighbor on the front on Taiga. Also, by getting rid of this dumpster in the back, we were able to modify our parking a little bit, pick up an additional parking space, and put the handicap accessible, accessible area and walk within that area where the dumpster was originally located. So, that gave us the ability to pick up an extra parking space. So, we have thirteen parking spaces on site, and one of them is a handicap parking space. So, the buffer area on the southerly side has not changed. We still have the green giant arborvitae along the property line with the fence behind it, the fence just being off the face of the curb. So, when we were looking at the signage, may as well finish up our discussion about signage here. Let me see if I can bring up the, Mr. Bias's plan, A one. We had shown three rather large signs on the southerly side of the building. We determined at the last meeting that any signage on the side of the building required a variance. We looked at, based on the size of the building, we were actually, if the side of the, if the building was rotated ninety degrees, or actually faced North Bevrick Road, this, this side of the building would be the front of the building, it'd actually be allowed to have a hundred and forty-three square foot. So, what we have shown here is larger than what we just agreed upon, which is now, these signs are, as shown, are three by twelve. We've now agreed to a sign size of eight foot by two foot. So, this sign, instead of being twelve feet wide, will now be eight foot wide, and instead of three feet high, will be two foot high. And we anticipate ultimately that we would have three individual users within these smaller retail spaces. So, the proposal would be to have three signs, which any signage on the side of the building would trigger a variance. With respect to the freestanding sign, we have prepared a different detail than what was shown on the site plan that was submitted. This is a little bit more of a modern, in nicer-looking time, rather than having a pole. We have a stanchion that's split the half foot wide. We have an area for the address on the pole, and we have an area for two signs. This freestanding sign meets all the sign requirements of the orders. We are proposing that it would be internally illuminated.
This is A four, counsel?
I believe it was part of the submission. Mark, wanna clarify, was this part of our submission?
We submitted this under a cover letter prior to the ten-day period.
Why don't we mark it as A four and we'll call it modified freestanding sign detail?
Right, so freestanding double-sided site sign, that meets the freestanding sign requirement.
Okay, you wanna show us where that's gonna be located, Mark?
Excuse me?
Can you show us where it would be located?
The sign is located right in the front corner of the, of the lot.
Mr. Cover, how does this new sign differ from the sign in the original proposal? I lost that.
The original sign, the original sign just had a pole.
Right.
And then it was a sign on top of a very narrow pole. Now, we've added this stanchion that gives it some architectural dimension to it.
And all those changes still are completely within code?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, at the, at the last meeting, we testified about the parking situation that's on site. There's an existing building on the property, and there's two individual driveways that enter onto the driveway. Now, each driveway has an opening, one's thirty foot and one's fifteen foot. And because of the spacing and separation of the driveways, it's really inefficient for on-street parking. So, we will be eliminating both of those curb cuts and both of those driveways. When we replace those two driveways with our proposed driveway entrance, we're actually gonna pick up one parking, on the street parking space. And then we also, after hearing the discussion about parking at the last meeting, we analyzed the existing site and the parking requirements for what's already approved on the particular site. And what's on the site today, within the existing dwelling, is a one thousand and fifty square foot yoga studio, which would require five parking spaces. And there's also one two-bedroom apartment, which would require two parking spaces. So, the way the site, the uses on that, on the site today, there's actually seven parking spaces required for that use. And we have two driveways that are, that allow for stacking. So, you can get, in each driveway, you can get two cars in each driveway. But each time somebody wants to pull out of the most inner parking space, the person in the most outer parking space has to back out onto North Bevrick Road, jockey around, and allow that person to back out onto the road. So, that's a, that's a, not a good situation. We've eliminated that situation with a parking lot that meets code, meets residential site improvement standards. But my point with the existing site and the parking situation is, is that site is currently underparked by three parking spaces. And under our proposed scenario, we are also underparked by three parking spaces. But there is a benefit to our plan in that by eliminating the two individual driveways and just making one driveway, we are going to pick up one more parking space that can be parked on, on the street. So, after adding in our parking lot, modifying the driveways, actually, from a global standpoint, parking on the street, parking on our site, we are going to actually have a deficiency of two parking spaces, where the existing situation is a very poorly set-up parking situation and is three parking spaces short. So, our position is that even though we're intensifying the site, the parking situation is going to be much improved.
Now, Mr. Walker, we have since petitioned the board for a soil movement permit, which we have noticed for and applied for. So, could you tell us a little bit about the moving soil, how much we have to move, whether we comply with the regulations?
Sure, so, the total moving, soil moving, you know, cutting, filling, within the site is a thousand one hundred and sixty-seven cubic yards. That's just soil that needs to be moved around. The net is a, an export of six hundred and eighty-one cubic yards that will have to be removed from the site.
Okay, can you tell us whether that could be effectuated in such a way as not to cause annoyance for the people in the immediate area or traffic problems? And whether we'd fully satisfy the requirement of county soil movement ordinance?
Uh, yeah, no problem. That amount of soil is maybe a little bit more than excavating a single-family foundation area. So, it's, it's, it's not a large amount of soil that has to be removed from the site.
Very good. Now, Mark, I just happen to note that as, as you have this on the screen in front of us, that the two houses that are, or two residential properties that are contiguous to us, the homes themselves are rather remote, more proposed development, is that fair to say?
Yeah, the, actually, the homes, the backyards of the homes, the one house on Taiga is behind our property, whereas the actual house is directly adjacent to the UPS building. And then we have another residential structure fronting on Oneyada, which butts up directly adjacent to, the pavement is right on the property line, it was commercial property on the corner of North Bevrick and Oneyada. And then there's a rather large backyard that backs up to our property. So, as you can see, our property compared to the other two commercial properties on the end, on the ends of us that front on North Bevrick Road, are actually on, on the corner, they're corner properties, and they back up directly adjacent to the structures. Our lot is a piece of property that's in between the two corner lots, and we have fortunately the position where we're kind of backing up to the backyards of the neighborhood that fronts on Taiga and Oneyada.
All right, I don't have anything else from Mr. Walker, so he's open to questions.
Any quick questions from Mr. Walker?
Yeah, can I see, can you possibly show us sheet number three out of eleven?
Oh, um, I do not have those sheets up. I can try to bring them up.
The only reason is, there's a proposed sidewalk, there's a proposed sidewalk along the front of the building, and it says it's four feet wide, but the plan itself scales off to like three and a half feet. So, I just wanted to be certain that the width of the sidewalk in the front is going to be four feet for the majority.
Chad, are you talking about the sidewalk along North Bevrick?
No, along the, parking along the fire lane of the, along the building.
Yeah, we're actually to the, from the building to the face of the curb, it's four feet. So, the curb, curb is part of the sidewalk.
Okay, I typically don't include the curb, but I assume you're doing it, if you can make the sidewalk four feet, not including the curb.
Mark, could you shift the?
Right now, we have, we have an eighteen-foot parking space and a twenty-four-foot access aisle. So, to accommodate that, we would have to go down to a twenty-three and a half foot access aisle.
And Mark, could you just shift the, the parking lot just maybe six inches to the south?
We are, we are five feet from the, from the property line with the parking.
Can you go four and a half?
And I believe we can, we can make that shift. I do not see a requirement where the parking has to be five feet from the property line.
Is that acceptable, sir, if we move that six inches?
That's acceptable for me, depending on what the rest of the board thinks. I have no further questions.
Questions by the board? Question, Mr. Chadwick, have any questions?
My question is, how, I have a question of, Chad, how important is six inches of sidewalk compared to a green buffer with the neighbor to the south?
Well, it's, it's something that if it's gonna be a commercial area and also is gonna be connected to the handicap spot, I would like it to be at least the four feet width, especially if it's gonna be access from the handicap.
Okay. I don't understand it, but if that's a trick.
Well, right, so, I have a question in regards to that resident that you talked to at Taiga. He mentioned the greenery, did he, did he also mention any type of concerns? Because that building is gonna be elevated and he'll have a lot of window spacing, or he or she will have a lot of window spacing that area. I know he addressed the greenery, I'm curious in regards to what level of maturity that greenery will be planted in that buffer zone? Because if I was a resident there, you know, one of the chief concerns that I have is the fact that I'll be deceased by the time that greenery becomes meaningful to the sight line from where I am.
Yeah, I can answer that question. I did speak to the gentleman, Mr. Faruki, and he was, he and I had a very nice conversation. As a matter of fact, I can get him on his cell phone if you'd like. He said that his kids go to bed early, but if I had to call him, I could. And in essence, he was the one that insisted on the fence on the property line, and he told me personally that, and he'd sent an email to the board secretary to confirm it, that if we put the bushes on the line, he would put a fence up against it and make basically the bushes between two fences. And when I explained to him that we were proposing green giant arborvitae, he thought that was nice. And I told him that they were eight foot on plantings initially, and he appreciated that as well. But he did not seem to have a concern about the improvements. He apparently has had conversations with my clients, likes them, thinks they, they're nice people, and seems to be generally supportive of the entire application.
Yeah, there's just no fence that could accommodate that second story, right? I mean, there's, there's no fencing.
There's no windows.
There's, but no, there will be on the other, on that side, on the, the north side, won't there, from the apartments?
No.
Yes, there will be.
Yes, there will be. Yes, there will be.
Are you planting the trees in between two fences? Is that what I heard?
No, we're not. Uh, what had happened is Mr. Faruki, the owner of lot three, said that if we put the bushes on the property line, then he would be forced to put a fence butt up against it. So he asked that, he actually offered to pay for half the fence. And I said, it's not necessary. And I, I, I was very happy to know that, uh, my clients had agreed to put the PVC white fence on the property line. He pointed out that on the opposite property line, there is a PVC white fence and he felt it would match nicely. Now, I could reach out to the gentleman on his cell phone and give him his number and say, you know, call me.
I, I don't think that's necessary.
He did ask not to.
Any chance you can plant the arborvitae on a, on a small berm where you lift them up a little bit more?
Uh, Mr. Walker?
Well, yeah, I mean, the only, the only concern I have is that then you start eating into this, uh, space where we have a common area for the residents.
Yeah, unfortunately, you don't, you're not really as remote as you think you are. Uh, um, so, I mean, this is just, uh, the conditions that go with wanting to cite something here. Um, I, I think the board is pretty familiar with this area. Um, you know, the buffer is not so plentiful there.
Would you like us to increase the number of plantings? Perhaps we could plant them closer together?
Things should make them as, as thick as possible, for sure, without crowding them so they, uh, you know, cut each other off and die, which often happens when you plant them too close together.
You see, these, these bushes are, they're not like your white pines or something like that where they just grow together and die. These kind of grow as a hedge. And I actually have some here in my yard and, uh, they grow about a, a half feet a year.
Yeah, no, they'll, they'll grow tall. I would say in ten years, they're going to be very tall.
Yeah, so Mark, could you, could you, uh, beef that up a little bit, Mark? So that there's, uh, that they're denser?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Okay, so we could do that. We'll pre-plant more of them closer together so that there's less gaps between them and that they grow as a hedge.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely, listen, we want to make it work.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is Casey. Uh, do we still need a side yard variance, uh, on the other side by the commercial building, uh, UPS building? Do we need a side yard variance?
No.
There is, there is no.
There's no side yard required in this, in this zone.
Oh, okay.
I made a mistake. Very earliest report I submitted said there was a side yard variance. I corrected that.
Okay, all right, that's what I was saying.
It's a long time ago.
So, eh, what are the bulk variances we need in this? Anything?
Mr. Walker, why don't you walk us through those variances so everybody got a handle on it now that the D variance has been eliminated?
Okay, so we will need, uh, we're going to need a parking variant. We're going to need a variant for not providing a fifteen foot landscape buffer. Um, we are going to need a, a sign variant. And we are also going to need a, uh, I guess, uh, use variances taken care of, correct?
Yes.
So we don't need a use variant.
So this, the sign variants marked in building signs on the, on the parking lot side? Because otherwise the freestanding sign and the one on the front lie with the ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's the signs on the side of the building, the buffer in the parking, right?
That, that's correct.
Any other questions?
Have you acknowledged the, uh, updated engineering review letter? And that, uh, if there are any questions regarding the, uh, letter? And will it be revised?
I, I didn't, uh, did you have a, Chad, did you have a letter on this, uh, revision?
Yeah, soil movement. I think you addressed soil movement.
No, my records had, records have an updated, uh, engineering letter dated September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Back in September, Mark, I think you went through that earlier.
Yeah, I think we, uh, we addressed your comments.
Want to acknowledge that, um, you're going to do anything that's outstanding.
Yes, I don't see a problem with it.
Thank you, no further comments.
Any further questions? Any members in the public have any questions? Laura, any hands raised?
No hands.
Shepherd, do you have any more witnesses?
Yeah, I have the last witness, Ms. Lisa Phillips. She'll address the, um, C variances. She's a licensed professional planner. So, uh, if she'd be so kind, maybe we could put her on the screen, have her sworn, and she could give us a brief testimony.
I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned, Mr. Shepherd, because it's ten thirty. We normally only go to ten o'clock. I'm kind of, you know, peeping everybody up a little bit later, hopefully we can finish. But I don't see us getting through the, the testimony. But then we have to go into conference and everything, uh, I, I don't know. What's the board's pleasure? Want to go till eleven o'clock or do you want to quit now? I'll, I'm willing to go if anybody else is willing to go.
I have to go work this morning. I'm re, I'm retired, so.
I, I can go to eleven, but I don't see us dropping up by eleven.
I don't either. Mr. Shepherd, I think we're going to carry this case. What's the next day, Laura?
April twenty-first.
What?
April twenty-first work for you, Mr. Shepherd?
It's my wife's birthday, I'll have to ask for permission. Uh, is there any chance of a special meeting? Because I could, I could hear my clients ask from, from here.
No. No.
Arranging a special meeting at this point between now and April twenty-first will probably not be easy.
Well, if it's the soonest, well, the first choice would be to keep going. But since that's not going to happen, then the next choice would be a special meeting. But since that's not going to happen, then I'll take the next available meeting. If it's April twenty-first, I'll, I'll have to ask my wife to.
So are we going to, uh, to go along with an extension till April twenty-first with no further notice or with whatever extensions are required?
Yes.
So move Snyder.
Second ready.
Your second?
Second ready.
Discussion? Thank you, Mr. Ready, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Mr. Shepherd said, you know, like, like, like Mr., uh, Catherine said, he's got to go to work tomorrow and I got to get.
I understand, I appreciate it. I realize you're talking at seven thirty.
No, we, we've been here for, we've been here now for three hours and we did our best. Unfortunately, we got hung up a little.
I, I understand.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, I will see you in two weeks, I guess, if I don't see anyone before. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved Williams, good night.
Second Snyder.
Any second, second, uh, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for all your time. It's a pleasure to work with you guys. Take care.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, all. Get home safe, John.
Night, everyone.
Good night.